We'll call this meeting to order at six oh one. And as usual, we got, we have a quorum. So the next item is, there's any changes to the agenda?
Recording in progress.
Uh, nobody has any changes to the agenda. So then we'll move on to is, uh, the public comment for people. Anybody who has anything to say that is not on the agenda? Do we have anybody here who wish to speak to one of those, something not on the agenda? I don't see any hands or arms or anything else. So we can then move on to the consent agenda, and this is an MPO item. And it's a minor tip amendment that, uh, we need to deal with.
Move to approve.
Is there second? All right. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed abstaining?
I'm sorry, I'm gonna, um, we're, we're without Amy tonight, so Regina's taking minutes, but, um, I think Dan seconded, who, who moved that?
Andy.
Andy, good, thank you.
And so the motion then passes. Hearing that. Next on the agenda is the approve the minutes of March sixteenth. And do we have a motion for that? Garrett, uh, emotions, uh, the second?
Second.
All right.
And then let, um, Shelburne's alternative, uh, member vote on this item.
Oh, very good. That's right. He was here. Uh, are there, um, any corrections to be noted on the minutes?
Been called a lot, but never an alternative.
I just have one little, you know, tiny thing, uh, on page two, lines thirty-four and thirty-five of say the same thing. It's a bullet point, high criticality, high crit- uh, kal- ity. But that's all I have any, so is there isn't no other corrections, uh, all those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
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 Any abstentions?
I think I should abstain as I wasn't there.
Okay. Uh, any, uh, so, uh,
I'm sorry, who abstained?
Deirdre from Charlotte. Dana was at the meeting. I'm, um, I'm here in Dana's place today, but.
So the motion passes. And then we have to move to some of the, the meat of the meeting, uh, it's an MPO, uh, action item. And it's to warn the public hearing for the major, a major tip amendment on the Champlain Parkway.
Can I ask Christine to kind of, you know, kind of review the outline of the major tip amendment and then, um, may have a little fun from, uh, the city of Burlington and maybe from V-Trans if they want.
Um, thank you, Charlie. Uh, so the item is a little bit convoluted, so I hope I didn't lose anyone in this description. So what we're doing, there are three projects that are in, involved in this amendment. Um, two for Champlain Parkway and the third is a separate project, and we'll talk about that last, but, um, basically what's happening here, so, so the, um, this has come about because the cost, Champlain Parkway has gone to bid, the bids have come in higher than the cost estimate. We had an estimate in the tip of thirty-five million. And the S, the estimate came in at sixty-two point seven million. So just to make clear that that number, the thirty-five million is what was in the tip. It's not what was Burlington's, um, previous cost estimate. So this is changing in the amount in the tip. Because as we talk about frequently, the tip is fiscally constrained, which means that we're limited by the dollar amount that we can have in the tip. We were looking for, um, a way to add this money based on any projects in the tip that are not, that have fun, funding that are, is not going to need them. Excuse me. And so this is primarily coming from the exit seventeen project. This project has excess funds in our tip as compared to what's in the transportation capital program. So this change in the years of twenty-two, FY twenty-two, FY twenty-three, and FY twenty-four, do not take money that, that is needed by that project, it's taking excess funds. So when you look at the agenda item, you'll see that there is, um, a funding schedule for each year, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. And it's a combination of taking funds that are available from the tip. And then, um, we're talking about releasing some of the excess funds to V-Trans that then we will look to program back into this project in FY twenty-five. V-Trans has agreed to, um, this proposal, I believe they can speak if they, uh, have something else to say about it. There is at the end about, um, let's see, nine million plus, uh, about four million that will be funded outside of the fiscal constraint, their money, it's money that just cannot fit within our fiscal constraint limit. And this is for phase one of Champlain Parkway, which is home avenue to Kilburn Street. Um, so the change is to Champlain Parkway, that's on the front side. Exit seventeen is on the backside of your agenda item. Um, I'll let Burlington speak to the reasons for the changes. And then, uh, just to call your attention to, there's one project that seems like it doesn't belong with these, but this is just another major tip amendment to add a, a bridge project on Route seven in Williston. It's a major amendment because it's a new project to the tip. And, um, and Champlain Parkway is a major amendment because of the cost increase. So if you want to talk about any more details, I'm happy to go into more detail. If not, uh, should I turn it over to Chapin or Norm to talk a little bit about the reasons for this increase?
Yeah, Chapin.
Great. Thank you so much, Christine, for having us. Chapin Spencer, Director of Public Works. And first, thank you to the Regional Planting Commission Board for your patience over the years shifting this project, uh, uh, in many out years. Uh, and I am pleased to say that after decades of diligent work with V-Trans, Federal Highway, the RPC, and partners, we are now doing what many think is unthinkable, which is bringing this legacy project to construction. Uh, I'll have City Engineer Norm Baldwin and Senior Engineer Corey Memes, uh, provide an overview of just how, uh, the bids came in and, and where we're at financially. So Norman, Corey, yeah, we see the image, but we don't hear you.
Sorry. Didn't hit the mute button. Sorry. So you should see the image of the route for the parkway itself. Does anyone see that? Okay, good. So perfect. Um, so this is a depiction of the segments that Christine was referring to. This project was broken up into two different phases, the first phase being, uh, the connection between Home Avenue and Kilburn Street. And, uh, there was significant conversation about, um, how this project would be coordinated with other products within the city, particularly in the south end. We have the Shelver Street Roundabout ongoing right now. We have the, uh, Rail Yard Enterprise advancing. There have been significant conversations about, uh, EJ issues within the King Street, Maple Street neighborhood, and, uh, how making these final connections to the project would affect them. And so I think this plan has, has been responsive to both what the state and federal process requires, but also to our local community. So that's why we've broken it out into two separate phases. You can see the red segments are the balance of the product to be completed in phase two, which follows phase one. So yes, we did have a bid process. And, um, this is just the, uh, south end coordination plan that I referred to in terms of all the number of different products going on. What's important here is to understand how the sequence of work will occur. And that, uh, we have only really primarily two means of access to the city north and south. Uh, Shelver Road and, uh, Pine Street itself, with Shelvin Road Roundabout in place. We've had to coordinate those project schedules. So, uh, let's see, next slide. I'm not going to get into the merits of the project and its details, but, um, uh, I think what's important to, uh, the board is really what the estimate was and what the, uh, bid we received was. And so the engineer's estimate was twenty-six million, in excess of twenty-six million came in at just short of forty-one million, leaving a difference of fourteen million over a three-year period that was in excess of our estimate. Low is just a listing of our local match obligations that came with, that we as a city have to assume that we presented to council. Uh, and then the series of, uh, reasons we believe, uh, drove up the cost of this project. One is, of course, as everyone knows, Russian forces invading Ukraine has had impacts on our energies. Uh, uh, inflation has gone incredibly high all at once. Uh, and then you have, uh, what we believe is a competing market for, uh, contractors, um, time and effort. They, uh, have obviously a lot of work that's backlog from, as a result of COVID. They have staffing issues in terms of, uh, people transitioning out of the workforce. And it's been, I think, a challenge for contractors to, to really staff up and deal with the volume work that's in front of them. As a result, they're selective about the work that they are bidding on and, uh, are unfortunately a, a narrow market of competitive contractors in the, in this, in this work. We've seen other pricing come in higher than, uh, what was reasonably expected in the recent past. And we've also seen material costs going strangely right through the roof. Uh, I, it's my belief that this project, because it's got such a long duration of construction and scale and complexity, that contractors are, uh, had, uh, covered their, their risks by having exceptionally high price, more than we would reasonably expect in a competitive market. So all these things combined have made for a so-called perfect storm of financial challenge with this project. But we believe if we were to re, try to repackage this at a later date, that it would have more serious consequences, both from a permitting standpoint, but also, um, would we get any more competitive pricing than we already have? And we don't believe, at least in the near term, in the next five years, that we're going to see that. So we think this is the, the best approach to move forward with, and we've, we've consulted with Federal Highway and the State of Vermont, and, uh, they are in agreement, they've had our, we've submitted our bid analysis. That bid analysis has been, um, accepted by V-Trans and forwarded to Federal Highway, who is in a concurrents to, uh, proceed with the award. So there's been a secret amount of work to talk through this complex issue, but we are here tonight to seek your support to, to continue forward and advance this project. There's just a other longer list of, and then, uh, respective schedule of, of things and events that we need to, steps we need to follow through, milestones we need to follow through to arrive at a commencement of construction. And I will stop sharing unless people want to see more or ask questions.
Norm, could you go back to that, that timeline that you had? Cause this is, I mean, we're looking at the tip through FY twenty-five, but this is going to go past FY twenty-five, right?
Yep.
Apologies for making you go backwards here.
Can you, uh, see, can you?
And probably, I just, you see that now? Bringing this up, um, just for, uh, yep.
Okay. So, um,
Not, not that schedule, Norm, the, the big construction schedule, going out over years.
Yeah, the south end sequencing schedule.
Yeah.
Okay.
And probably I just wanted to kind of, um, have the board focus on that for a moment, that, you know, this is not, this doesn't end in FY twenty-five, even though that's what's in the tip amendment. It's going through twenty-six and twenty-seven, uh, probably. Uh, I don't know, I don't know if I should cross my fingers or, or what, what emotion to put on that, but, um, that's, that's the projected schedule right now, right?
Yes. And it's appears to be holding, but obviously as we get further down through this process of all the other projects that may change. Think a critical project to that, it's a rail yard enterprise project and, uh, I think council's expectation is that that makes significant progress before next phase of parkway is advanced because of all the expressed EJ issues that we've talked about.
And that's, that's a really important one. Thank you. And sorry, Catherine, I don't want to steal the chair's gavel here, but, uh, John Zaconi has his hand up.
Uh, just a quick question. I don't know if it's just a, only includes one phase or not, but, um, you just told us that the bid went up to forty-one million dollars in the packet we received. We were informed that the amount has gone from thirty-five million to sixty-two million, almost sixty-three. So there's a, the, there's not, those numbers are not jibing, and I'm trying to understand what's, what the bill is.
So the answer to that is it, it's, um, I think the sixty-two million is all inclusive of both phase one and phase two, and also all soft costs that are anticipated. There was, um, an adjustment or, uh, reconciliation of what it would take to actually, contract the project both from RE Services, Environmental Services, Force Account Engineering within our team, so on and so forth, all those costs that go with not just the construction costs, but support to, to bring it forward.
So the, the forty-one million is the full cost of just phase one?
I would, um, absolutely.
With this construction costs.
Forty-one million is just the construction cost. That's correct. Thank you, Corey.
Okay, of just phase one.
Just phase one. That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Norm, why don't you stop sharing so we can see everybody's, uh, questions and?
I was gonna actually see if the financial.
I have a point of clarification to that item is that, um, since the thirty-five million was the entire project. And so for the way that we look at our, what constitutes a major amendment, we need to compare apples to apples. So that's why that overall cost was the full amount. And, um, there is a schedule in the tip amendment that talks about what's going to be in phase two and what the amount per year is that we expect to happen past the four-year window of the tip.
All right, Catherine, you're still muted, but, um, I think Jackie has her.
Sorry. I have, I'm still working on that cloth. Stuck it on the cloth drop here. Okay, Jackie, thank you.
So I'm not sure this question's appropriate, but I'm curious, you know, since you're taking money out of the exit seventeen project, um, because you say it's, it was X kind of, I hear extra. What's to say the costs for that aren't going to go way beyond what is anticipated? And will we be in sort of the same situation when that actually comes to construction? Um, I think for that point, we, we develop, we reevaluate the tip every year. So we will continue to monitor that, um, what we're reflecting is what's in the current transportation capital program, V-Trans is budget. And yeah, we will, uh, we will adjust it every year if it's necessary.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, are you ready to, um, vote on the, uh, the amendment to the tip?
Well, and I just want to be clear, we're voting on, uh, warning a public hearing for the next meeting.
Exact, that's true.
Yep. So although the, yeah, what's in the documents says approve the tip, I think, um, is that, uh, Christine, is that what the TAC recommended? Was to approve the amendment?
Um, I'm sorry, I, I did.
Just to warn the public hearing, well.
It says to recommend.
Tip amendments, but the issue is to warn a public hearing.
Um, the word, the wording for the TAC is to warn a hearing and, oh, I'm sorry, I, I, the typically the, is to warn a public hearing and approve. But I think we didn't have the final numbers for the tax, so they are going to hear this at their next meeting, so they haven't made a recommendation yet.
So I'd move to warn for a public hearing.
I'll second it. All those in favor, say aye, and it is the MPO, uh, no.
Aye.
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 Any abstentions or, um, any no's? Hearing none, the motion passes.
Now that the public hearing, um, vote is behind us, can, uh, someone from staff, Charlie, Christine, whoever it is, please provide us what our actual authority is here. This project has its detractors, as we all know. Um, and if we have the power to kibosh everything because of, uh, it needs all of this additional money, um, some of us are liable to get, uh, lobbied, if you will. And when citizens come to us, it's very important that we understand, first off, what our actual authority is as a commission. So I'm not trying to say I want anything done, or I want to block anything or approve anything or anything like that. I just want to know what our authority is. So when, uh, if we actually wanted to vote no on this, can, does the project die? I mean, just, what, what, what is it? Please tell us what our authority is so that when people approach us, we can, um, talk intelligently to them about what it is that we need to do.
Yes, thanks for asking, John. And so I think this is probably a good conversation to just MPO authority in general, right? MPOs were created in the sixties after the interstate era. And local governments didn't have a voice in the decisions that DOTs were making, you know, putting interstates through cities, et cetera, right? And so we, uh, you all have a pretty blunt instrument power. Um, you could vote not to include this in the tip and not allow federal funding to be used for this project. Um, however, um, that doesn't come without any implications, right? Um, and so, uh, my understanding is that, you know, Federal Highway and V-Trans have communicated, uh, to the city that there's a forty-five million dollar payback of federal and state funds that have been extended, expended to date on this project that would need to be paid back. And that's, so just so you know, yes, yes, you could vote no, but, you know, there's dominos that happen after that. And I don't know if either the city or V-Trans wants to add anything to that comment. Or Matthew?
Yeah, um, I just wanted to add that, bear in mind that this project has already been authorized by Federal Highway Administration. So they've already authorized, um, the amount that we had in the tip. So we're looking for the difference in the funding here. So, uh, if the MPO were to decide not to fund the additional amount, then the, at that point, the, the city would have to decide whether to proceed forward and find the money elsewhere or to not continue with the project and face paying back, uh, forty-five, forty-nine million, something like that.
Thank you. Does that answer your question?
It answers my question. I just wanted to make sure everyone, not just myself, was, uh, understanding of what our authority is, because like I said, that's the only way that when people approach us, we can have an intelligent conversation with them. So I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions before we move on then? Sort of, uh, applying the background. Otherwise, we're moving on to, uh, warning the, uh, public hearing for the UPWP and budget.
Yeah, so, um, I'll, I'll try to address this one. So this is another, uh, action vote to warn a public hearing for the work program and budget for the May meeting. You got the work program, the draft work program, the draft budget, uh, were separate links, uh, on the website. Hope you had a chance to look at them. Yeah, uh, you're welcome to the city. Thanks, Norm. And, uh, the, uh, the thing I think I want to spend the most time on is, is maybe the budget document, which, you know, is just a couple-page summary kind of, of what's in the work program. And this work program process, uh, was a little different than previous years, uh, in part, uh, two reasons, we had more money. Or there were two reasons why we had significantly more money in, from a MPO funding standpoint. Uh, one is, was the Infrastructure, uh, and Jobs Act that, uh, increased our funding by about thirty percent of MPO funding. And that's, you know, in the realm of five to seven hundred thousand dollars a year between Federal Highway and FTA funds. And, um, and Chris, I hope I don't mischaracterize, uh, Chris Jolly from Federal Highway informed us that there were also some excess Federal Highway funds available, you know, in the realm of around five hundred thousand. So there was quite a bit of, uh, additional funding compared to previous years available this year. If you remember, I think I sent out a, uh, encouragement email, uh, early, you're probably around the end of the calendar year saying, hey, there's more money available, please apply. And, um, and you all listened. And so had a couple of effects. So we got about one point eight million dollars of, uh, MPO funded requests. You know, and going back in years past, we were more like one point two, maybe one point three. Uh, in that realm, it was a little bit more last year, uh, again, as we were trying to, uh, invest some of the available funds that hadn't been used previously. But, um, there's, there was a significant increase, um, and probably about, um, twenty more projects than normal. Were added to our overall work program. Uh, some of that was MPO funding, but there were also other dynamics going on, uh, in the state, uh, which I'll touch on, uh, briefly, but, so that's kind of the big picture. Just to let you know, uh, and the UPWP Committee chaired by Chris Shaw, uh, walked through all of these projects and, you know, have recommended this to you all, uh, for consideration. And so I don't, any big, any questions about kind of the big picture? Okay. Um, and then I'm gonna, let me know if you want me to pull up the budget. I'm just gonna do a little walk through the budget, just because it gives you a kind of the broad perspective of what's happening in the work program. And so I'm not going to pull it up unless somebody asks. So, and first, we talked about the municipal and regional, uh, funding. Um, you'll see there's a yellow highlight in the dollar amount for FY twenty-three. And that's really noting that the legislature is having discussion in their budget about increasing the amount of the regional planning funds going to RPC statewide. And you'll note in red text, uh, in column B, that it may be about a hundred and fifty thousand. That's the average per RPC. Uh, we tend to get a little bit higher share, so it could be more than a hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase in that particular line item, uh, which will be very helpful for our kind of general regional planning tasks. And, um, you'll see that there's more money in that direct line uh, because we don't have the staff capacity to spend those funds right now. And, uh, I certainly didn't want to hire without knowing if that money is really coming or not. So that may create a little opportunity for us to do some more, uh, general planning work than we've had in the past. Sorry, I spent a little bit more time on that, uh, than normal, uh, the, uh, and I don't know if there's other things to touch on here, uh, we're still working on the SEDS, and other municipal assistance. Uh, you also see that line has gone from like fifty thousand last year to seventy thousand, so we're getting more requests kind of for, um, I'll call it kind of consulting assistance from the planning staff. Any questions on the municipal regional planning section? Okay. For the transportation section, um, you'll see kind of an increase in staff time there of about, uh, ten percent. That is largely due to the idea of hiring an equity manager, uh, and spending more time on equity work. Particularly with MPO funding, and that's a, a big emphasis for USDOT right now. And then looking further at the transportation section, you'll see on road twenty-one that there's over a million dollar increase in consultant funding. And so that's really where you're seeing the impact of additional funds available. You know, we're not hiring a lot more transportation staff to manage those projects. And Alani would want me to say, yeah, at this point. But, you know, we're kind of, we're trying to see how efficient we can be with existing staff. Uh, but there is a significant increase, uh, coming through that, that line. And any questions on the transportation funding? And any questions on the transportation funding program? And obviously I mentioned those twenty extra projects, most of them are in that MPO section. Okay. Going down to the natural resource and energy section. You see some yellow highlighted rows, we have a four or five hundred thousand dollar brownfield grant that's pending. We'll hear about that in the next couple of months. There's another funding program under consideration in the legislature for municipal building energy retrofits. Well, no, no, it's municipal resiliency, I think. So it's, I don't know, it's been having a couple of different names as it's going through the legislature. But they're talking about providing some funding to the RPC staff to help municipalities access. About forty million dollars of state and federal funds that will be available. For weatherization or energy conversion. And all kinds of, you know, energy improvements to municipal buildings. So that's what that line is. And then you see water quality programming. We've talked the last two or three years about being a clean water service provider. You see that on rows forty-five and forty-six. The DEC is, and please flag me if I'm using any acronyms that need to be expounded on. But the Department of Environmental Conservation is providing a grant to us for about six hundred and fifty, six hundred and forty thousand, something like that. To do natural resource based projects in Basin Five, which is kind of the watershed. That is along Lake Champlain and also includes a lot of Grand Isle County. And a little bit of Franklin County, too. Including St. Olins, so that's a big chunk there. And then emergency management and health. You'll see the Health Department has gotten. A pretty significant grant to deal with health equity. And that's actually impacting our work program in a couple of those, you know, two or three of those different yellow lines. As they are working on how to have more healthy community design and address equity issues. And there's a little smaller grant for hot, hot weather or emergency response planning. So those are, I'm hoping that was helpful covering some of the pending new things. That look like they're coming through the budget this year in the legislature, which we should know in the next couple of weeks as they go into conference to. Sort out the differences between House appropriations, vote and Senate appropriations. And what came out of the two houses. Any questions on the revenue side for budget? You'll know a big, you know, it's a two million dollar increase over last year in total. All right.
Don't see any questions yet.
Yeah, no, all right, nobody got too scared yet, except me. Okay, great. Well, and and staff. On the the back, the the next page of the budget is our expense side. And you see salaries, and I meant, I forgot to mention one thing about the clean water service provider work. Is that we are also working on hiring another person in our business office because there's going to be. You know. I don't know, twenty or something, probably new contracts just related to that clean water service provider. So our admin work is going to go up significantly in the coming years. And between that and the equity manager is the, that, you know, kind of, that's a big part of that twelve percent increase in our salary line, which is. You know, our biggest investment is in staff. You know, it's around eighty percent of our operating budget. Exclusive of the consultant work. Not too much else notable, you know, kind of minor things otherwise on the expense line, and we are working on refining some of these numbers. So when you see it, what I hope is the final version next month, there may be a couple of little tweaks as we're kind of doing the fine tooth combing through this. Any questions on the expense side of the budget? At this point, and then. I hear anything? No, I wanted, the executive committee asked me to spend a few extra minutes. And I'm going to apologize to John Moore right now. Who's who's next up on our indirect rate. Down at the bottom of the second page there arose like one thirteen to one twenty-two. On the lower right, you'll see a little indirect rate history. And it's just something that I think the board, you know, doesn't hear too much about. But there's a lot of our staff time or a good chunk of our staff time, and of course, you know, our rent and those other kind of overhead expenses. Go into this federally approved system of being part of an indirect rate. So things that can't be directly charged to a contract go into this indirect rate. And you see how our rate has been approved by Vtrans every year. You see that on the in column, I can't see the the heading. But the approved indirect rate column, and then it gets audited, we have an actual indirect rate. And it gets reconciled every year, really by Forrest, and then reviewed by Vtrans for approval. And depending on the outcome of the audited actual numbers. We have to adjust our rate. So if we overcollect one year, we have to. And we get, then we get audited, kind of the the second year, and this is on a two-year cycle. So we're in FY twenty-two, we got the FY twenty-one audit informs our FY twenty-three indirect rate. And so, and and of course, the even years move together also. And so there's been some fluctuation in our indirect rate, we overcollect one year, and then two years later, we have to undercollect. We've been trying to reduce the fluctuations. But you can see FY twenty-one, we had significant revenue over expenses of eighty-six thousand. So that means that probably FY twenty-three, and if you look at the bottom line of our budget. Is minus fifty-two thousand, the reason for that is because we have to undercollect our indirect expenses in FY twenty-three. To compensate or mitigate the over collection in FY twenty-one. I'm sorry, I know, I feel like a really. Detail oriented bureaucrat right now, and I apologize because I think half of you want to go to sleep right now, but is there anything? Did I raise any questions in that overview? Was it helpful? Was it helpful at all? All right, thank, somebody nodded, yes, thank you.
And I don't, and I don't see any hands up for questions or anything either.
I thought it was a great summary.
Forrest, I paid you. Okay, yeah, so so Madam Chair, we're looking for a motion to warn this Republican for next month.
Yes. Garrett motions to do so. Do we have a second?
As far as I have a second to.
Thank you, Bert. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Looks like the motion passes and the. UPWP will be warned. We now have a nice presentation by John Moore of GMT to talk about its proposed service reductions.
Yes, good evening, everybody. My name is John Moore. I'm the general manager at Green Mountain Transit, and give me a second so I can share my screen. Can everybody see that? Okay, great, and I will start with a little bit of a spoiler alert. In that this agenda item is listed as GMT proposed service reductions. But I'm happy to report that just yesterday, the GMT Board of Commissioners did vote to. Avoid the implementation of the vast majority of our planned service reductions. So tonight's presentation will be more of a general budgetary overview of GMT. And highlight some of the challenges that we're facing, but also some of the opportunities that we see in FY twenty-three and beyond. So I'll start with a a quick summary of some ridership ridership trend data. And this really starts back in July of twenty nineteen, so about eight months before the pandemic hit. And as you can see and probably expected, we saw a dramatic reduction in ridership around March twenty twenty. Since that time, you can see that we've been kind of on a pattern of increasing and then dipping in ridership and then increasing again. Which generally follows the COVID case count, so you know, pretty logical. You know, just to put it in perspective, in fiscal year nineteen, which was the last full year pre-pandemic. We provided about two point three million passenger boardings. In FY twenty-two, that was down to about one point two million. And then, as you can see from this chart, you know, we are trending. At the moment, down a little bit, but certainly have increased from the real decreases that we saw early in the pandemic. So in terms of our revenue sources, this is an important chart because we are publicly funded. We get our revenues from four primary sources. For FY twenty-three, this is a little skewed because we're still using some federal COVID relief funds. So our federal revenue amounts are higher than they typically are. And our state and operating revenues are lower than they typically are. But as you can see, sixty percent in federal funding, including those COVID relief funds. Seven percent from the state of Vermont. Twenty-two percent in local funds, so in Chittenden County, that's from our eight member municipalities in Colchester. And that three point five million funds the fixed route service in addition to the ADA. Paratransit Service operated by SSTA under contract to GMT. And then the operating revenues of one point seven is primarily made up of our passenger fares. And we'll talk more about that in a few slides, but that is down significantly based on the ridership chart that I just showed. So I just want to give a quick overview, you folks are certainly aware and familiar with federal funding. But like a lot of federal funds, Federal Transit Administration funding does have matching requirements. So operational expenses do require a fifty percent non-federal match. And I did highlight that fuel is considered an operating expense, not a maintenance expense. And I'll talk a little bit more about some of the pressures we're seeing with our fuel budget. And then in terms of maintenance capital and new start cost, those all have a twenty percent non-federal matching requirement. And I do want to just highlight that with the IIJA, there has been a thirty-five percent increase in federal transit funding. Which is really good news. But that non-federal match is really the limitation that GMT is facing, and. You know, that's the area that we're focusing on to make sure we have the non-federal match to maximize all of that increase in federal transit financing. So I'll get in to our FY twenty-three budget a little bit. You know, we try to follow the municipal budgeting cycle as much as possible as we do collect assessments from our member municipalities. So we really started our FY twenty-three budgeting, you know, last summer. And obviously, a lot has changed since then, and in the next slide, I'll outline some of those changes. But in terms of the fixed route assessment, which is the local funding in transit. We typically have a three to four percent annual increase. FY twenty-three was a four percent increase, which generated an additional ninety thousand dollars. And that's a two point two six million total local investment in transit. When you add the ADA paratransit service, that's how you get that three point five million number from the pie chart. Originally, we balanced our FY twenty-three budget with about six thousand hours of service reductions planned. That was about five percent of our total Chittenden County service that we provide. And those proposals included reducing service on the Shelburne Road and North Avenue routes. From a bus running every twenty minutes during the rush hour to every thirty minutes during the rush hour. And then also eliminating four daily monpelear link trips. Again, as of yesterday, we are going to avoid. Any service reductions on the Shelburne and North Ave routes, so we'll continue the twenty-minute peak hour service. And instead of eliminating four daily monpelear link trips, we're only going to eliminate two of those with the current plan. The twenty-three budget as originally approved by the board. Also included one point five eight million dollars in passenger fare collection. We have been operating without a fare since the start of the pandemic. But our budget currently does assume that we will restart fare collection in July. That one point five eight million number is based on our current ridership projections, which are still about. Twenty percent less than what we had for pre-pandemic ridership. And that's important to note because we collected about two point three million in passenger fares before the pandemic. So that seven hundred thousand dollars in revenue difference has not been offset in cost savings. We've had more of a focus on getting people back on the bus, you know, as we come out of the pandemic. And, you know, it's, we feel it's very counterproductive to, you know, reduce our service and, you know. That would have a spiraling effect in terms of more ridership loss. So we think it's the right move, but it's certainly a financial impact when your revenues drop seven hundred thousand dollars and. You don't reduce your expenses in a similar fashion. Our twenty-three budget also included about two hundred thousand in reserve funding. That's important because through the pandemic, receiving these COVID relief funds. We have had an internal goal of meeting our fund balance policy, which is having two months. Or about two million dollars of cash on hand. We've currently met that goal for the first time in a very long time. And so taking the two hundred thousand out of that, you know, did have some impacts there. And then another cost increase we're seeing is in our ADA program. SSTA, as I mentioned, provides that service under contract to GMT. That service provides service. In a three quarter of a mile buffer around the fixed route service for folks that are unable to take, you know, the regular city bus. Due to a variety of reasons. Like GMT, their fuel costs and labor costs are going up, so there are certainly some cost pressures there. But there's also just a general increase in demand for that service as the population ages. More folks qualify for that door-to-door paratransit service, so we do expect. Additional cost pressures in that program. And then lastly, our FY twenty-three budget, you know, does consider. That we are in the second year of two new collective bargaining agreements that we executed in the fall. We feel very happy to have reached agreements with our union partners. But while we feel that we're paying market rates, those market rates have increased during the pandemic. Especially for commercial drivers and skilled mechanics. There's a severe shortage of those employees in the area. And because of that, the wages in those job classifications have certainly increased. Since our last collective bargaining agreement, so that's put some more pressure on our budget. As I mentioned, a lot has changed since we started our FY twenty-three budgeting. And similar to what you heard with the Champlain Parkway project. We have experienced some recent cost increases. You know, number one, restoring the service that we had originally planned in our twenty-three budget. Adds about two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar in cost back to our twenty-three budget. And then fuel is a real wild card right now. We are expecting to pay about five hundred thousand more in FY twenty-three than we originally budgeted. And that's based on an original budgeted amount of two dollars and seventy-five cents per gallon. We're currently paying about four dollars and thirty-five cents a gallon, so we're likely going to adjust our budget to four dollars and twenty-five cents per gallon. We are planning on removing the the two hundred thousand in reserve funds. Again, with a strong internal goal of having that two month of operating cash on hand, we think that's incredibly important. And then we are currently awaiting the award of our state operating funds. There's an annual application process that we go through with the Agency of Transportation. And that's really what dictates the timeline of our budget adjustment. Typically, we get that grant award sometime around July first. But we are expecting about one million less in state operating funds than what we typically received before the pandemic. For twenty-three, we do have two point two million of COVID relief funds left that will offset that. But after twenty-three, we will be out of our COVID. Um, but after twenty-three, uh, we will be out of our COVID relief fund. So if we don't get back to pre-pandemic state operating levels. Um, that will put a, a lot of pressure, uh, on our budget. Um, mostly in that, uh, every dollar we get in state operating, we can leverage another dollar of federal funds. So every dollar reduction in state operating is really two dollars, uh, in revenue reductions to GMT. So that's, that's very critical. Uh, and then lastly, um, the current versions of the House and Senate Transportation Committee passed, uh, transportation bills, uh, H seven three six. Uh, includes between one point two and one point four million, uh, dollars for GMT in FY twenty-three. Um, there are some differences in the flexibility, um, for the two versions of the bill. Um, the House version is the one point four million, uh, amount, um, but that would be restricted to zero fare. Um, and then the Senate version is a lower amount, that one point two million, but provides some additional flexibility to GMT on how that is spent. And, um, I will illustrate why that's important here, um, in a few slides. Um, so a, a general summary of all of those, uh, FY twenty-three, uh, budget adjustments. Uh, they all add up to about a one million dollar, uh, deficit, um, from what we had originally budgeted. Um, and so we really have two options, um, to, uh, fill that hole. The option number one, um, and this is what we would do if we don't get the additional, uh, legislative money from the transportation bill. Um, we, we do have about one million dollars we're projecting in unspent, uh, COVID relief funds from our FY twenty-two budget. Um, that again is, uh, significantly impacted by the price of fuel. Um, but we feel relatively confident we'll have somewhere in the one million dollar range at the end of this fiscal year. Um, so that would, um, fill that deficit. Uh, or, uh, if we were to get the, uh, money in the transportation bill. Uh, we would use, uh, roughly a half a million of that to leverage the same amount of, uh, fifty-three oh seven federal funding. We would, uh, balance the budget that way. We would keep the one million, uh, in unspent COVID relief funds, uh, for twenty-four and beyond. And then we would, uh, our board would then make a policy decision on how to spend that additional, uh, seven hundred thousand or so of, uh, T-bill funding. Uh, either for some level of continued zero fare service in fiscal year twenty-three, uh, or, um, saving that money. Uh, for, uh, to avoid future service reductions. Um, and that's where the flexibility that's included in the Senate transportation version of the, uh, T-bill, uh, becomes important. Um, for, as you'll see on this next slide, um, as we look at our twenty-four budget outlook. Um, again, assuming that our revenues, uh, generally stay flat, uh, fuel stays at four dollars and twenty-five cents a gallon. Uh, in that our ridership does not rebound to, uh, full prevent, pre-pandemic levels, uh, in, in FY twenty-four. Um, we've looked at three different scenarios. Uh, all three scenarios assume that we avoid the service reductions in twenty-three, which our board voted yesterday. Uh, all three assume that we get one point two million in additional legislative funding. And really the only difference is, uh, the fare free piece in, in fiscal year twenty-three. Um, so you can see that, um, if we were to remain fare free in fiscal year twenty-three. It's going to create about a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar, uh, local fund deficit in FY twenty-four. Uh, if we were to operate, uh, only half the year, uh, fair or free in FY twenty-three, we'll have about a fifty-six thousand dollars, uh, surplus in local funds to start FY twenty-four. And if we were to charge a fare, uh, starting in July, we'd have about a one million dollar, uh, surplus in, uh, local funds. Um, and while that is, uh, excellent news, um, I will say our very early projections of FY twenty-five. Is that we will need all of that one million, uh, dollars and then some, uh, in local funds to balance our FY twenty-five budget. So. Um, in summary, uh, we're planning on minimal service reductions in FY twenty-three, uh, per the board, uh, action yesterday. And then, uh, next month in May, uh, the, the board, uh, will make a policy decision, uh, on, uh, the zero fare status for FY twenty-three. Um, that will be pending, uh, T-bill funding and it will really be an exercise in balancing, um, you know, what we can afford, uh, in FY twenty-three. Versus what we know we're going to need in non-federal, uh, dollars in FY twenty-four and twenty-five. Um, one option that we've discussed internally is a mean, uh, a means tested program, uh, in that there would be some eligibility. Uh, income eligibility, uh, requirements. And if folks were eligible, um, based on income. We would allow them to continue, uh, zero fare for FY twenty-three. So that could be a way to provide, um, you know, the benefit of, uh, a fare-free service to the folks that need it the most. While, um, you know, trying to, uh, balance our budget, um, by collecting fares from folks that may not need that, um, economic, uh, relief. And so, um, the biggest takeaway, uh, is that, you know, we need additional non-federal funding in, in future years. Uh, we can balance twenty-three, um, and we can, uh, balance twenty-four based on what the decision is, uh, for, uh, fare collection in, uh, in FY twenty-three. Um, but we're going to continue to face, uh, cost pressures. Uh, we think fuel is going to stay high for, uh, the foreseeable future. Um, you know, it's still unclear, uh, the impacts of teleworking and other COVID, uh, related, um, uh. Reasons for, for ridership rebounding. And then lastly, our ADA program, we do expect as the population ages. Uh, we'll continue to see, uh, more demand in that program, which will increase the costs. Um, and so all of this does highlight, um, the needs identified in the CCRPC Transit Financing Study. Um, and I think GMT, uh, working with, uh, the CCRPC and V-Trans, uh, will, uh, certainly focus, uh, our legislative outreach this summer and beyond. Uh, on that, uh, study, uh, and really the need for, uh, more sustainable, non-federal, um, funding of transit in the state of Vermont. Um, so that's what I have tonight and I'll stop sharing and, and happy to answer any questions you folks may have.
Thank you very much. Uh. Given that, uh, you know, the stat of the ridership often drops when the gas prices go down, would you expect that ridership will increase with, uh, the increase in gas prices for people?
Normally, yes. Um, you know, back in two thousand eight is when we had our all-time record ridership when fuel prices were at all-time record highs. The one difference, of course, is COVID and really teleworking, um, and trying to figure out what the long-term impacts, uh, of teleworking are. Um, you know, we support teleworking, you know, it does reduce, uh, VMTs, which, you know, is part of our mission. Um, but it certainly, uh, when you look at our link routes, especially, uh, the Montpelier link, uh, particularly. Um, we're only at about thirty percent of the pre-pandemic ridership and, um, you know, a large reason for that is, uh. You know, folks in Waterbury and, and Montpelier have been able to telework. So, um, it's kind of a new, uh, scenario that, um, you know, there's not a lot of. Uh, industry literature or research on, um, you know, what the long-term impacts of this will be. So, um. The, the long answer, uh, is we don't know, but typically, yes, higher fuel prices do, uh, result in higher, uh, transit demand.
Are there, uh, other questions or comments to be had? Okay. I don't see anybody's hand. Well, thank you very much for your presentation. It was quite, uh, useful.
Sure. Thank you.
Uh, given that there were no questions or comments, uh, the next thing on the agenda is the, um, Board Development Committee. Uh, FY twenty-three Executive Committee nominations.
Do you want me to jump right in, Catherine?
Yes, because you were the chair of the Board Development Committee as immediate past chair.
Okay. All right. So the Board Development Committee is recommending the, you saw the slate in your packet, but I'll go over it. Catherine McMain's as, uh, continuous chair, Chris Shaw as vice chair. Bard Hill to move to secretary treasurer. And the reason for that is that, uh, John Ziccone, who would have gladly stayed. I hope I'm not misquoting you, John, but, um, he hit the, the ceiling for time served. So we had to. Um, get a new secretary treasurer. Uh, we're recommending Bard Hill. Jackie Murphy as the at-large for towns over five thousand, Michael Bissonnet from Heinsberg for the at-large for towns under five thousand. And I will stay on as the immediate past chair. Are there any questions about the slate?
I do want to thank Bard, uh, and Mike stepping up, uh, Bard, uh, to moving up to second, uh, treasurer and then, um. Mike moving into the under five thousand category, because that turns out to be a real problem, uh, that, that we need to have more. Uh, rec, uh, people from the, uh, towns under five thousand to, uh, you know, attend the meeting so that they can serve on the executive committee.
Let me also thank John Ziccone for all his service to the executive board, including a phenomenal job as the secretary treasurer.
That's true. I should have recognized that first because he's been there for four years and, and that's, that's, you know. It's hard to get people to want to be secretary treasurer.
And then you fired me. What can I say?
Yeah, but you were in a nice place to receive that news.
Yeah. Yes, I was. Oh. But I enjoyed my time and I, I highly recommend anybody who's really interested in this organization. To spend some time on the executive committee. It's a much different experience and you do have, uh. Much larger access to just information and day-to-day workings, simply because you're more involved, not because anything. Other than that. And it, it was a very rewarding experience and I appreciate every, uh, everybody's help and cooperation along the way.
That's true, because Forrest does a great job of helping, uh, on, on, on that part.
And I thank the staff for putting up with me all those years.
No problem, John.
Catherine, I saw Charlie had his hand up, I think.
I, I think he was going to mention that now that John's gone, we can afford to go to Hula.
No, that was just a thumbs up thanking John for all of his contributions. Really appreciated it there.
Indeed.
But basically, that's all we had to do. The, the next thing is a larger discussion and I imagine it's you, Charlie, on the equity update. Uh, and the new scope of work.
Yeah, so, um, uh, you may remember in January, we reviewed, uh, Creative Discourse Group. Uh, we hired them, uh, probably about almost eighteen months ago now. Um, and so during the, during twenty-twenty-one, uh, a lot of community interviews and stakeholder interviews. Uh, and we had an equity summit in November, you'll recall. Um, and that resulted in a report with some recommendations that they gave us at the end of the calendar year. We reviewed it. Uh, you know, fairly quickly at our January board meeting. Um, but, and I think, I think maybe it, it might've been Mr. Ziccone that kind of said, well, you know, we haven't. Adopted all these recommendations. This is just a consultant recommendations. Um, and so here we are today, uh, a couple of months later, kind of digesting that and. Uh, I had started to move ahead with kind of their first recommendation, which was to hire an equity engagement manager. And, uh, you know, after some more conversations and reflections and, and input, uh, I, I put that hiring process on hold. Um, and I think, I think at least, uh, the executive committee, I think, uh, so, supported that, that decision. Um, just to give us as an organization, some more time to work through this, this issue. And I, I say this issue like it's a simple thing, uh. This, uh, whole host of issues, uh, related to equity. Um, and how as an organization, we really want to move forward on this topic. Um, and so, uh, pause the hiring, but then also ask the consultant team, could you come back with a, a scope of work? That would help us work through, uh, as a body, uh, you know, staff and board. Um, how we should move forward on this work, um. In a, in a more collaborative way where, I, I guess, I'll, I don't know if it's, uh, the right way to think about it, but, you know, so that everybody's in the boat, right? And we're rowing in a similar direction most of the time. Uh, so knowing, uh, you know, this will not be perfect work by, uh, any stretch. Um, and so, so we put in the packet, uh, and I'm on, I'm looking at like page fifteen now. Uh, in your packet, um, the, the scope of work, we have not entered into the scope of work. Uh, it's still a draft. Um, the equity leadership team looked at it, um, maybe two weeks ago now, ten days ago, something, uh. In the last week or two, may, we made a few edits after that committee meeting. Um, but, uh, I think the equity leadership team and, and I certainly thought it was, uh, important to bring to the full board. And see if there are any tweaks to the scope of work that would be helpful in our equity work over the coming months. Um, and, uh, you'll, you'll note that, uh, the task numbering starts with number two. Because, uh, from the consultant team standpoint, the twenty-twenty-one work was task one. You know, all that assessment work and, uh, culminating in that, uh, recommendation report. Um, so this is starting with task two. Um, and I'm going to walk through these tasks. Uh, I'm not going to read every bullet here, but I'll just kind of give you my, uh. My perception of what will be accomplished under each task and how. Um, so the, the first task, which is titled expand and diversify the equity leadership team. And please, again, let me know if anybody wants me to share this, or I'm hoping you're following along, uh, on your own screen. Um, it, it talks about expanding the equity leadership team, which had been an idea the consultant had proposed from the outset. Um, but we haven't done that yet. Uh, so that is still on our to-do list. Um, and you'll see that's the first major bullet there, uh, the process to recruit new members. And of course, um, get them on the team. And then the third bullet, also defining the role of the equity leadership team. What is their role within the CCRPC? Are they providing advice to the board? Are they providing advice to the staff? Both on what topics and when? Um, so that's something that we're hoping to get more flushed out with, um, in this task. Um, and then the second and fourth bullets are, uh, a little more, uh, related to my mind about our shared understanding of our approach to equity and how we move forward. And specifically, the, uh, second kind of arrowhead bullet there, uh, that says work with ELT to review recommendations from the consultant's report. Develop an equity statement and specific tasks recommended for action to the board. Um, so that work is really to hone in on, uh, you know, what does the equity leadership team specifically want to recommend to the board? In terms of what's our statement around equity? We don't have an organizational. Uh, statement of intent or inclusion, or there's a lot of, uh, conversations going on around the state. Different organizations have adopted. You know, statements, um, not many of them have adopted action plans. Um, and so we're trying to. Both get the broad statement of what we're trying to achieve with regard to equity and then also. Some specific things about how we intend to do that, or what's our action plan. Um, so this is, uh, maybe the most important thing, uh, is having a more diverse equity leadership team and. Having a clear set of actions that are recommended and decided upon by the board. Um, and I think that was really my big takeaway over the last few months is that you, you as a full board have not. Um, had the opportunity to really, uh, guide the equity work, uh, or direct it as, as a board of directors. And any feedback on that, that kind of big first task? Did it make sense?
Or is it a comment?
I just had one, you know, when I, and maybe the sequence doesn't matter. But, um, the first item is recruit new members and then the third item is to define what the purpose of the group is. And it would seem to me you, you define the purpose of the group before you recruit members for the group. Does that make sense?
That's a great feedback. Thank you.
Any other comment?
Yeah. Sorry, Catherine.
I was just going to say, are there any other comments?
Charlie, I'll just, uh, Bard makes a great point. I was just going to say that, that I believe. The equity leadership team has three board members right now. We need a fourth, but maybe it's, once we get the, the. Just definition of what it's about, it'll spur more interest, hopefully.
Yep. Yeah, and, um, another, uh, topic that came up at the executive committee, sort of, is a slight tangent. Um, but, uh, that I need to do more recruitment. Uh, we've had that socio-econ slash housing seat on the board has been vacant. Uh, pretty much for the last year since, uh, Justin Dextrater moved to, uh, North Carolina. So, um. You know, it may be that person, uh, depending on their interests, to Mike's point, you know, uh, that, that might be interested in this or somebody else on the board, uh, currently. So. Just a little tangent hanging out there. Any other feedback on this task?
Uh, this is Wayne, uh Wayne Howe, and I know we talked briefly, Charlie, at a meeting or two before about possibly me joining this group. And I did look at this proposal before and. Uh, and looked at the minutes from the last uh meeting that happened just what, a week or two ago? And I just kept struggling with looking for things that were ultimately actionable. Rather than a conceptual notions about where we should be going and. You know, maybe Mike O'Brien has a a sense of that, but to me it. It it seems all foundational and important, but I I just wish it's sort of intimated about where this was going to go. Was this going to dip its toe into looking at regulations for affordable housing? Or I'm just sort of making that up. And 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 I didn't see any of that in the consultant's proposal. And and to me, that's what struck me that that one of the later steps wasn't. Getting our hands dirty in in kind of the regs themselves that ultimately would result. In improved opportunities across the board or whatever. I that's just that's just my feedback.
Yeah, thanks, Wayne. And uh, from my view, I think that is what um, when I'm talking about specific actions. Like, is that is that what we want to do? Like, let's talk about that and decide that's what we want to do. And then, you know, everybody's eyes are open and. And uh, you know, you can go back and talk to your select board and they know that that's what our board decided to focus on. And that's why we haven't had that conversation yet.
Thank you.
And that that could be a good one. Okay, I'm gonna move on to uh what they number as task three. Um, and this is a workshop series with staff, the ELT and the boards. Uh, this is really more of a training task. And you know, they listed some examples of things that uh maybe to focus on, but those are not decided. And certainly, I think between the board and the ELT, you know, you can certainly guide what topics would be most helpful to hear about. And uh, learn more about. Um, this is asking uh kind of mentioning eyes wide open. Note that they're asking for, you know, four one and a half hour sessions. So, you know, that's pretty much the length of our board meetings. Uh, so, you know, it's could be most of four board meetings over the next, you know, number of months devoted to this topic. Feedback on that. So somebody's choked up. Or is that just Catherine?
No, it's just me.
I I don't mean to say just Catherine. I hope your cough gets better.
Me too. I got new medication today.
Folks okay with uh engaging in some more, you know, learning and training on this topic? And take silence as acceptance at least? If not, not enthusiastic support, thanks Garrett for a thumbs up or an A okay? Jackie?
It it would be helpful to hear from other board members because um, those of us on. The on the equity group, we've been through some training and. You know, I think we all pretty much attended the the summit, and I think there was not a great representation of other board members. At that summit, so it feels a little frustrating to not hear from people now.
I saw Deirdre's hand up, but does she still, you still want to talk?
I think Deirdre was giving a thumbs up to training on this, but I don't. I shouldn't interpret.
Looked like a hand to me, so I couldn't tell, but John has a hand up.
That's correct, and and I'm happy to add that I've been very appreciative of of the time and the attention and the training. That the board has offered its members. I've 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 not quite known how to share that with the select board in my town. And I I I welcome any suggestions on how to do that effectively. Because I I thought it was, what I've what I've been able to experience, two thumbs up. Thank you very much.
That's a, that's a good thing. I'm gonna uh kind of make a note that whatever training is delivered, uh, we try to do in a way that you can share. But I think that's a, that's a good point.
Um, yeah, I just want to bring up the practical thing. It's got nothing to do so much with the. Uh, topic at hand, but if are the training is gonna take an hour and a half per month. And then we have regular business to do, which is another hour and a half. I can tell you that in the months of May through September. Uh, that is just not going to work. Don't even kid yourself that that is going to work, that we're gonna be here for three and three and a half hour meetings. During the some months or any month for that matter. So be very mindful that, especially on Zoom. It's one thing to have us all in a room. You can take a break. You can. Mingle a little bit. You can have something to eat. Three and a half hour Zoom meetings are just an absolute stop. Don't even try.
Thank you for that. Um, and and just so you know, I was not thinking about three, three hour meetings for you. You know, I I'd like to, I I care about you too much to do that to you. I I was thinking our business meetings are probably gonna be thirty minutes, right? And we and we won't have a presentation from John Moore, right? Like, um, we would just be focused largely on this. Um, you know, we have had. You know, presenters and things that we probably would not have for most of this calendar year or the rest of the calendar year.
That's fine. I just wanted to point, I guess, my whole comment is just about time, not not, it's just time.
Uh, and do other people agree with that? Like, um, and we'll certainly work with the executive committee each month to kind of make sure the meeting is not more than. Outside limit two hours?
Yeah, that makes sense, because if we know ahead of time, you know, how much we're scheduling. You could take a few minute, you know, five minute break, ten minute break or something between our regular meeting and 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 the uh equity training. So that you you come back a little more focused.
That just adds to the length of the meeting, which is, I think, what the.
Even if you were in person, if you took a break to have food or, you know, you know, as you said, take a break, whatever, it it's still gonna take time.
Yeah, so.
Over two hours in Zoom meetings I've been on has been a complete non-event, a complete waste. And nothing to do with the RPC. I'm talking other Zoom meetings. Two hours is a real, I think, kind of max limit.
Bard?
Well, I was just gonna observe beyond strictly duration, the um ability and willingness of folks to participate. And more things is always what we think of as risk factors to projects or initiatives. So that's just a general comment. The more we ask of people, and I'm not saying this is low priority or anything. It's just more we put in, the more challenging it is for many people, especially folks with multiple commitments. Outside of work and have work as well.
Thank you. Uh, Andy?
Hi, thank you. I I want to second John's comments and I. I I don't know if I'm the only person thinking this, but I thought that the two uh events that we had this year were. Interesting and kept attention. As as I recall, there were two. Is that correct? That we had this year? Two of the equity trainings. Am I correct?
Yeah, yeah, and they were shorter. Yeah.
Yeah, um, I'm kind of wondering if we spread to four, that it's it's gonna cause people to lose interest. And that the effect of having, that it will be more effective to have two meetings than rather, rather than four. Just because it might cause people to. I hate to say the word zone out, but when you have more and more and more, uh, there's less impact on the meetings that are already had. And I wonder if it was more effective to kind of go ahead with the format that we had this year, perhaps with. Slightly different presentations or different subject matter, but I thought that it was. I I question whether it's more effective to have more meetings or having fewer meetings that have more impact.
Thank you.
And I think it barred, uh, that that kind of dovetails with what Bard said as well.
Yeah. Chris?
I'll build on what everybody else has been saying, and thank you, John and Andrew and Wayne for pointing out some of the things. And Jackie, even when we talk about what I've seen to date, uh, and I'm sorry, I wasn't to do the summit. I think it was a Saturday or so, but there is a lot of time involved, and it seems like the more canned approach. That we get from uh creative discourse uh is counter to engaging our interest. And I think I mentioned this before, and I'd love to see if creative discourse can actually get down into our area of expertise. And begin to apply case studies and provide examples and illustrations and outcomes. Uh, rather than just throwing it out there, uh, well, what's your thinking on such and such as we've had in the past thing? Uh, on these generalized ten thousand, a hundred thousand foot level discussions. When I think we're all here with a finely sharpened pencil for stuff that relates to transportation, land use planning. And the communities in which we live. And so uh, it would be really helpful and would really get me sharpened and focused. If they could do just that, is provide examples from around the country of situations that uh exemplify. Uh, what we're, I believe, supposed to be learning about and how to deal with it.
Yeah, and uh, thank you for all that feedback, and it's making me, I'll I'll go back and talk to them also. Some of this, even like reading some of the bullet points that they have here, maybe more appropriate for staff, you know, who are actually conducting. The public engagement work. Like, you may be interested to hear how it's going, but you don't need to be trained in how to do it. Right? Like, um, I don't, I don't know, that maybe some of you want that training. I don't know. So we'll, we'll. We'll flex this a little bit and also, you know, uh, try to focus it up more for the board, uh, so it's doable. Um, one thing I'm thinking, um, just looking at May to October, you know, that's like five months. And we may need to stretch it out some too, like maybe it doesn't all happen in the first four or five months.
Harley, summer is tough.
Yeah, I agree.
If if you really want people's time and attention at a six o'clock meeting when it gets dark earlier. And you know, where we're engaged, um, is uh much more focusable, if that's an actual word. Then in the middle of July and August, when everybody's got other things on their mind, and they don't want to be in their stuffy little office on a computer. So if if they really want our attention, I would work that schedule.
Yeah, and and our reality, just to follow up on that point, John, uh, which is, you know, our June meeting is. I mean, that's a more of a social meeting with a ten minute board meeting. We have, we have a decent business meeting in July, but we probably don't ever go more than an hour. In August, we don't even have a meeting. So, um, yeah, I'm I'm with you. Summer, uh, summer's too short here in Vermont to uh.
And we typically start with trainings in September anyway, when people are coming back. So I mean, it makes sense to start that training then.
Yeah, thanks.
Wayne?
Oh, you're muted.
I I just want to underscore Chris's point. It would be really good to have. A case study of here's what they did in Cumberland County over in Maine, you know, to get rid of redlining or whatever the deal is. That we would then have something to reflect upon the kind of actions we might take. Rather than a more generic. Assessment of our own internal values, if you will. I just think it might be a little more useful. So I just want to underscore his point. Thanks.
Thank you, Wayne. Any other comments before uh Charlie goes on with the um discussion? I don't see any other comments currently.
Um, so the uh, the number four task is. It 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 says equitable review of the UPWP. Um, I'm not sure that's exactly the right phrase, but um. We uh did have some conversation with them, just and and I think this is actually following you up on the point that that Chris and Wayne just made. How do we actually, you know, apply some equity thinking into our actual projects? We've, you know, and we've dipped a toe in this. We've had an equity impact worksheet where we look at where we need to do more public engagement. Um, and we've been, you know, carrying out those efforts, you know, whether in Winuski or the Old North End in particular. Uh, where we have done significantly more engagement to try to engage underrepresented communities. And I think this is a little bit of an effort to try to apply some work. And so that that's what this task is about. And and sorry, Bard, I don't know. Did you want to, are you going backwards or on this task?
No, it's really this one, and um, I appreciate that comment because the consistent with what people just said a few minutes ago. When I read this, it reads like they will do it and tell us what the results are, which I think, well, that's fine. But what we really want is to embed that process in our own staff and our own process. So they aren't doing it for us. They are helping us to stand up a process where we do it ourselves. Does that make sense?
Yes, that's, and that was absolutely the intent part. Thank you. Try to make that clearer. I'm sorry, Catherine, did I cut you off?
No, no, I was just gonna say I agree with that. That it just didn't read well, for one thing. Because you really do want to know, you want to learn how to do it rather than have somebody tell you what it is.
Yep. Yep, good. Thank you. Um, so task five, uh, is just kind of a generic, you know, we've kind of. Had them on call, if you will, on various situations that have come up over the last year. You know, might have been a specific project or uh our relationship with a specific group. Uh, where we kind of say, hey, can you give us some advice on how to uh handle this situation? You know, I think maybe following up on the points you were just making. Like, uh, how how can we best approach this, or how will be a more productive way to approach uh this relationship? So this is, you know, a little bit of on-call task, to be honest. Any feedback on on that coaching and consultation with staff? Okay, um, and then uh, number six here. Uh, was really kind of following up on, because we had that convening in uh November. And there was discussion in, at the end of that session about, um, how do we follow up? How do we uh use our position in the community to host or facilitate or sponsor? And and particularly uh, with all of our municipalities, the ones that are engaging in this work. How do we provide uh maybe a forum for them to share? So we're not telling anybody what to do at those meetings, but more allowing for group learning. Uh, you know, across municipalities. Um, and so this was, uh, I think intended to be some support. Uh, to us to support those convenings. Any feedback on that and?
I don't see any comments right now. It's not in your hands.
Oh, all right. I think that's a s- an applause symbol from Garrett and a. Oh, was that a hand up?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I in, I I think I may have said this in a earlier, different meeting. That I'm struck that we're, that we're using different words, sort of interchangeably at times, I think. So we're using inequity. Equity justice, racial justice. So I still ponder, is this focused on racial justice? Or is it broader? And so that's just a question, and I think we should just be consistent with our language and our focus, if that makes sense. And maybe this is where we start. It's a conversation that we've had before that we start with racial justice. And there the broader work is more inclusive. I think of things like gender, identity, disability, age. Things that have come up elsewhere. And so it's just a comment. It's more about the semantics and focus than anything.
Yeah, thanks, Bard. And we did have some conversation with the consultant team, and and this is the, and and I apologize for not actually starting with that. Because uh, you've made that point to me two or three times, and I uh, I don't seem to pick it up too well. But um, but I did hear you and had a conversation with the consultant team. Um, and and I think they do agree, like, we are ultimately trying to address equity more broadly. Because, you know, and just from a uh even a legal requirement on us, both from federal government and state government. Uh, we're supposed to be engaging all. We're supposed to be engaging all a pretty wide array of underrepresented communities and Bart just listed off a bunch of them. You know, and different identities that can be overlapping. And so it's not just racial equity or racial justice and but we may come back to, to address all those broader equity for all those underrepresented or marginalized communities. We may do some targeted work initially on racial equity. So I'm not clear on that yet either, but I do want to kind of put a flag out there that we do have to address equity in the broadest sense. And yeah, we may get specific at times, but ultimately the, I believe the objective needs to be broad and not narrow. If that's helpful, Bart, sorry.
Garrett?
Um, I'm going to be crass and mention money. I may be missing something here, but looking at number four, they're talking about eight hours. And as far as I know, it's two of them. And that one works out to $1,500 an hour. Now, I'm being a consultant. I'm good with consultants making good money, but it seems like a great deal of money. And as I say, I must be missing something there. And just wondered if what it is I'm missing. Thanks.
Yeah. Thank you for your crassness, I guess. But, but I think so I think it's a good question. I'll follow up with them on that. I, I don't think necessarily, well, I think if you're missing something, it's in that first line of the lightly shaded box that follows the title row at the top of page four of working with several, so several TCDG consultants. So there's, there's two members of this firm, but they have what they refer to as associate consultants. So there's kind of a broader network of consultants that they use and they bring in on a task basis. So that's a good question. I'm not sure how many people they're thinking about bringing in to this task, Garrett, and what that works out to. Well, I'll have some conversation about that.
Hopefully, doably.
All right. Well, thank you very much. That was, that was really helpful. I hope it was helpful to you to feel a little bit more a part of this conversation because I was definitely having a lot of anxiety about the board members not being a part of the conversation.
Well, thank you for the, the effort. I mean, I think it was really good comments that have been made. Moving along, you get to keep talking though. The executive director report.
With apologies to you all. Okay. So a hiring update, I already covered that the equity manager is on pause. We'll see when we're ready to come back to that, that maybe, you know, fall. And I mentioned the business office associate, the advertisement for that just went out last week. And did you, I don't know that you all saw the advertisement. Did you see the advertisement? No, I see a couple of notes. We will forward it to you in case you know somebody who might be a good fit. You know, it's more of a you know, more, I was gonna say entry level. I don't know if that's the right term, but we don't need somebody with a lot of experience. I'll put it that way. Or a lot of education. I think we're, you know, looking for somebody with an interest in, you know, bookkeeping and financial management to help the team. So for us, is that a fair characterization?
Yep, it is. Thanks.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll send you that job ad and please send anybody you know that might be a good fit our way. Any questions on that? Just a heads up, item B there is just a heads up that the, the input that we get into V-Trans Capital Project, projects for FY '24 is happening, I think at your next meeting, Christine or Laney, does I have that right? So this is a heads up that I'll be an action item next month.
Yes, it will be.
Yeah. So, and it's focused on bridges.
Yes.
So it may be a little simpler conversation than we had last year when we were looking at, you know, roadways and safety projects. Item C is just information I'm to let you know that we were involved with two RACE grants, which is a US DOT discretionary grant program. You may be familiar with it from past years. It was called Build under, I think that was under the Trump administration, and I think it was called Tiger Grants under the Obama administration. So this program's been around for a while with different names, depending on who's in office. But it's really a discretionary program where there's some good amount of money available. We've been a supporting partner with V-Trans and the cities of Winuski and Burlington, bless you, Tony, on the Main Street Bridge between Winuski and Burlington. And V-Trans is applying for a $25 million capital grant to replace that bridge. So that, that will be a big deal if we are able to get that. And just more construction for Winuski on the horizon. Yep, Mike says yay. And the second one is something, is a grant that the RPC applied for directly, more of a planning grant to really look at how we can support economic development, housing, and transit services in downtowns in our larger kind of commuting region. So Franklin County, Washington County, Addison County, and even going down to Rutland. They were kind of interested also. And so we submitted that. It's like a $2 million grant because it's the geography we're talking about is so extensive. So we, and this is, we've submitted similar grants the last three years. So, you know, the fourth time might be the charm and we will see. And thank you to Alany and Marshall for all the work that they put into that. And we'll hear about that. I think maybe August timeframe is what they're targeting decisions. And then finally legislative update. There's, well, the big news, I, well, big news for the RPC parochial budget was I covered in the budget, which is the legislature was very supportive of RPCs in a variety of ways. Regional planning, energy, water quality, and transportation. And so that's, that's been very positive and, you know, slightly potentially overwhelming. So, you know, kind of getting loved to death. And I'm hoping that all works. And then on policy issues, still debates about exactly how the legislature is going to address Act 250 or any changes that come in Act 250. Part of that is in the omnibus housing bill. There's also an omnibus economic development bill. Not clear to me at all how those are going to turn out in the next two or three weeks. So just stay tuned. You know, I think there'll be some tweaks in different programs and different incentives out there for both economic development and housing. And maybe a little bit of permit improvement or change anyway. I don't know. And Regina, is there anything you want to add about those two or three bills?
No, nothing else.
And then the last thing I want to mention, in the legislature, just kind of came up over the last week or two, is that Senate Transportation Committee included a provision in the transportation bill to have us engaged to some extent in an examination of the governance of the Burlington International Airport. And so that's getting discussed tomorrow in Senate Economic Development Committee. And, you know, we'll, we'll see if it gets through the process for both, you know, the conference committee of both houses. But I think it's just something that looks like they're asking V-Trans to kind of fund and hire a consultant to be kind of a neutral party to kind of look at the issues over the years about governance and, and see if they can come up with any recommendations that and they, and they have a pretty defined list of folks that they're appointing to the group with us called out in that section two or three times. One was you know, having me be on there as a non-voting member. Okay. The second there was us, the CCRPC. So this would be something that would come back to you, appointing a member of the general aviation committee, or I'm sorry, general aviation community at the airport to be on this. I don't know if it's called a task force or advisory committee, something like that. And then also for us to find and appoint someone to represent underrepresented communities that are impacted by the airport operations. So I'm not quite sure who that is or exactly how to do that, but it was interesting. And I just was not aware of that until today. So that's a little bit of evolving conversation going on about looking at the airport. John, did you want to pipe in there?
Yeah. Why do we have any interest in this? This is a mud flinging contest between the two cities, South Burlington and Burlington. And quite frankly, I don't want any part of this. I don't want us to have any part of this.
I will, I will convey that, well, that individual sentiment tomorrow. Unless, unless the board wants to take.
Or not.
What'd you say, Chris?
I said, the option is always there to not transfer that information. Obviously, you know, this is a topic that the General Assembly wants to look at. So I think it's a prudent look at this point in time. There are more than one town, South Burlington, that's affected by this, Colchester, Essex, Winuski. You know, it's gotta be looked at to see what are the pros and cons of having a single municipality controlling what is an international airport. It's in the best interests of the state, I think, to look at that too. So I disagree with John.
And that comes from someone's town who's flinging the mud. So I would still say that we should have no part of this whatsoever.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry. I saved that one for last. I think, welcome to getting other viewpoints that would help me have conversation with the legislators.
I have no clue.
No, Bart?
So, so this just for historical perspective, you think back of what the, the terrain around the airport looked like when the airport was first put there. In my opinion, that's when the mud started. It was a mud airfield surrounded by not very much other than fields and farms. And so what we have is the greater metropolitan area that's grown up around it since, what was it, 1919? Something like that, when they first started landing planes there. So I, I think this illustrates for me that we are sort of, we are the heirs to development by accident. You know, you put a airfield outside of town and suddenly it's not outside of town over a period of 100 years. For what that term.
Garrett?
Um, just to muddy the waters further, I don't know what the arguments between South Burlington or Burlington are and don't really care. Is there anybody in this meeting who hasn't flown out of that airport? It's a regional airport and I believe that's a part of our commission's name. And therefore I think it's important that we have something to say about it. That's all.
Thank you, Garrett.
Yeah. And just, I don't know if this helps or not, but just the language I saw today does have me on there as a non-voting member. And I think that was partly my response to their suggestion because I was like, I don't, well, and this may not be right. My perception only, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure that this body, the RPC board is going to be able to take a clear position, you know, on resolving issues, but happy to support the group having a conversation. I think it was kind of the way I phrased it when I was speaking with Senate Transportation. So that's, that's where I went out there. But just, and John, I don't know if that's helpful or not to know. I don't think they're, the, at least that committee was looking for this body to take a position.
Still, if you're involved, when you speak, it sort of comes with us in the background. And I, again, this is a turf war between two individual municipalities that I don't think we should or really have any business getting involved in. The legislature's gotten dragged into this because they've been lobbied by those municipalities. And, and we've had this chat in small increments before. And I still maintain we need to stay as far away as absolutely possible from this and not be involved. This is not about anything but the turf war. And let it, let them fight it out. And it really does not matter to us because it's not about service. It's not about how all the rest of our municipalities can access the flights there. It's not about how well it runs or how well it doesn't run. It's just 100% turf war and we should stay 100% away from it.
Well, to follow up you, John, since it, you know, because it really is more than just the region. It is, as you said, it's an international airport. So is that why the state, I mean, you'd think the state would be much more involved than it is. But is it, it's probably they don't want to get involved either.
Bart made reference, there's a long history of the airport, you know, predating the current systems, right?
Yeah. Well, you would think that the state would be much more involved, given how important the airport is to the state itself.
I believe the state would be involved that there was an actual problem. There is no actual problem. It's a turf war. And that's granted my opinion, but there is no problem. It's a turf war. And that's why we should stay away from it. If there was an actual problem, people who needed to be involved would be involved.
Thank you. Are we ready to move on?
I kind of would like Charlie to have a little bit of an idea of what the commission really thinks if he's going to talk to the legislature. I really, I, you know, this is probably the most important thing we've talked about all night. I want our hands. I, I, I move that Charlie tells the legislature that the RPC does not want to be involved.
Okay. Is there a second on that for discussion?
I'll second it just for discussion.
Thank you.
Karen?
All right. This calls for a discussion.
Well, can I make a comment?
Heard a little bit from Chris. Any other comments from other people in the, in the commission?
Yes. Whoops, wrong hand. Wanted to raise my hand. But anyways, if I could just comment briefly, I, I agree with John. This has been, something's going on for a long time. There's more to the airport. I mean, we call it an international airport. The actual international aspect of it is somewhat limited realistically compared to any other international airport in the country, probably. It's also very important to the Defense Department for, you know, having our fighter wing, fighter wing there with the F-35s. So our involvement in the dispute between Burlington and control over the airport and what have you. I kind of agree with John. I think that's something that they have, they have skin in the game more so than any of us. And for us to, as, as much as we could say we have involvement with it, would be to say that we have involvement with IBM being in Essex Junction. It's, it's, it impacts the whole county. We do, we do weigh in on those things. But it's kind of a more local issue between those municipalities, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you, Dan. Chris?
Well, I'm just going to reiterate, I think we don't need to belabor our points that I see it as more than a turf war. We're in the business of doing planning. We've got to be looking 30 years out. Is this model going to be something that's sustainable for the next 30 years? And I really think that this is a. Is this model gonna be something that's sustainable for the next thirty years? Uh and I really think that this is a. Chittenden County uh decision and at the very least, if not a statewide decision. As to who they would want to be operating the airport in the longer term. We can wait till there's a problem. But I think by then it's too late, I think, you know, it really needs to be evaluated. We all know what happens to these study committees in Montpelier. They're gonna do their study and then stick it on a shelf and nothing may happen for thirty or forty years. But at least the process is being discussed and looked at, I think it's really important. We do uh get involved and I appreciate what Charlie's done as a non-voting member, because it does keep us in an apolitical situation. Which I think is very important here, but running away from a potential looksee, uh I I just think that's. Uh sticking your head in the sand.
Thank you, Chris. Uh Garrett?
Um. I, Charlie, could you give a little more description of what this is about? Uh from what I heard from you, yes, we know about the turf wars, I don't care about that. But it sounded like there was more to this than just who's the boss or whatever. Could you go into that a little bit? Maybe there isn't more to it, I I don't know.
Yeah, give me a moment, I'm uh actually pulling up the uh, you know, there's kind of a a to-do list. Of uh, you know, the agenda for this, I'm sorry, I'm scrolling a little too fast. But uh, so sorry, going from my memory, oh wait, I'm getting closer. Um, you know, it was really to look at the governance and this is, you know, I don't, I think, I don't know who made reference. But this is not a new issue, it's been, was looked at in nineteen eighty-five, it was looked at, you know, by the Airport Commission. I don't, maybe in the last ten years, um and maybe a couple other times. Um and so it was kind of, I think the, the language now calls for this group to. Uh well, for Vtrans to hire a consultant. Um for the, and the secretary would be on this committee, um amongst others. It's a, to review those uh previous uh suggestions or recommendations that came out of the previous looks at this. And decide which of them were worth looking at. Um okay, and so here's, here's the creation language. The one sentence, to examine the existing governance structure and alternatives to the existing governance structure of the airport. And report to the committees, um and report the committee's findings and recommendations. So um, you know, it does. That's, that's it. Um so it is.
So it is purely about governance.
Yep, and the members that they have here right now, uh one member designated by the mayor of Burlington. One member designated by the council of the city of Burlington. One uh voting member by the city council of South Burlington, one voting member by the mayor of Winouski. Um, one member, I mentioned this, by the RPC to represent individuals such as BIPOC. Comma immigrants, comma individuals with low income, individuals residing in disadvantaged communities. Uh adversely affected by the airport. Um one member, uh one voting member designated by the RPC. To represent the general aviation organizations at the airport. The Secretary of Transportation, one voting member designated. By the CEO of the Lake Champlain Chamber. Um, the Director of Aviation Non-Voting, the Director of the RPC Non-Voting. So just, if that gives you a little more flavor of detail, sorry, I should have started with that.
So we would be appointing two members as well as your showing up?
Yep.
So, okay.
Well, in some ways, rep- uh appointing a member of the underrepresented um goes along with our new look at equity.
I think that's important.
Yeah, so that, that does make a lot of sense. Um, you know, and I, their thinking is that you have a broader range of people. To draw from, the same way with the aviation community. Uh it is nice to know that the state is more involved and. Because I go, I get, I I listen, I don't, you know, I don't have a dog, I don't have anything in this game, because I'm out here in Jericho. I just hear they have thirty-fives go over every once in a while, but um, you know, I. I understand the turf wars to a certain extent and I, you know, certainly having uh the Jericho was one of the. Community members that had uh a larger number of uh Air National Guard represented. We had a plane named after us, uh and that, uh you know, so Dan's comments are well taken, that, you know, we have the guard there. And and then, of course, you know, Chris is talking about sustainability, it it's good to see that the state is taking more of an inch. Because it, to me, it 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 seems like the state needs to have much more of a long-term thinking about what the airport is. And who and how it is sustained over time, with first my thinking is concerned at the moment. Oh, okay, Wayne?
I I just wanted to say something contrary to what uh your statement is, we live out in Jericho, so we're not so of affected.
But we're not close to it, so to speak.
Yeah, a- as I became involved in the select board, I I learned, this is all pre-COVID. There were, they're not quite commuters, but uh people who regularly, because we're only twenty, twenty-five minutes. From the airport, live in Jericho, Richmond or whatever, and they're hopping on a plane to DC. You're hopping on a plane to Chicago quite regularly, so I think we do have some skin in the game here, I'll just mention that.
There, I mean, because my thinking is not so much skin in the game, because it's uh, you know, proximity in terms of the organization. But I think, you know, because it makes sense that the state has more involvement, because it does impact so many other communities. Uh, Deirdre?
Yeah, I would say um, welcome this opportunity to participate in the conversation, even if just for the opportunity. To recruit and and nominate somebody from, from the marginalized communities. Um I feel like they have a very important voice and and probably have not had an opportunity to participate in these conversations. And I suppose we could, we could consider it an honor that, that our organization has been designated as the one. Which may be appropriate to, to recommend such a participant.
Actually, if I heard Charlie write, he's the one that's participating and and speaking on behalf of those. We are not recommending that someone from those alternate, those um communities um wind up on the committee itself.
So, John, yeah, that's, I'm sorry, you missed, uh that's, I did not say what you just said. I said, the the board is appointing somebody to represent those, those underrepresented communities.
Okay, I I misinterpreted that then, when I thought you said that was your role as the uh non-voting member.
No, no, there there are two members that they want the RPC to appoint. One to uh represent those disadvantaged communities, I guess is what they have in quotes in there. And then also the general aviation uh community or organizations at the airport.
I I still say the legislature is attempting to drag people that we would nominate into a turf war. And you're setting them up for doing nothing but being involved in a turf war, you're not setting them up to actually have any input in anything. Because this is nothing about who, about anything except who runs the airport. It's not about the services that it gives, it's not about anything else except who runs the airport. And I'm sorry, but this is South Burlington trying to drag the rest of us into the mud. And we, and and appoint people who are going to be unwillingly dragged into the mud by us doing it. And we need to stay completely away from this.
All right, John, uh any other comments while we have, while the floor is open?
Yeah, I just.
Andy, and no, Andy, you go.
Sure, so I'm finding myself in a little bit of an awkward position here, because I don't really know what. The city of Burlington would want to do, I haven't had that conversation on this, so um I'm actually going to abstain from this vote. And I'm, and I'm happy to do what is being directed by the legislature, if they're asking us to take certain steps. As long as we're staying more or less neutral, as long as I don't know what the city wants, but given that I don't know what. You know, what Burlington would really want to do in this situation. I don't normally abstain from votes like this, but I will be on this one, so I just don't want to. Vote against what the city might be wanting to do and what their position might be.
So noted, Andy. Uh Jackie?
Well, I sort of following what Andy said, is this really a choice? If if there's legislation that's appointed, that's saying the Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission will be. Uh on this board or, you know, uh even and make the appointments? Am I misunderstanding it?
Uh they're asking Charlie for his, our input on whether or not we do get involved at this point in time. There's no, there's no law yet, obviously, if they, we wind up in there, I think that's a different conversation. And you know, there's a bill that that's a becomes law and we're involved, that's one thing. This is about, should we be involved at all and are we directing our, our, um my my motion was, are we directing our. Executive Director to tell the legislature, we're not interested in being in this as part of the law. Not that we, we will go against the law if that's what it is.
Okay, thanks for that clarification, that that helps me to under, because I'm reading what Charlie just sent, I'm like, wait a minute, do we have a choice, so? Yeah.
Garrett?
Um, well, I'm now thoroughly confused, it isn't law yet, so it seems to me. Since there is no law, there is nothing currently to do, I've been reading through it. Uh from the link that Charlie put in the uh chat and it is a proposed law. So all we could do at the moment is to advise on this. Um, depending on how people feel, but if it does go into law. Then we don't have any choice, we are required by law to do it. So I'm not sure what you're saying you want us to do or not do, John. You know, I I don't understand the motion.
My my motion is to have Charlie tell the legislature when he meets with them, is it tomorrow, Charlie?
Yes, thanks, yeah, the, so I started this with the context of, uh we've been asked to testify tomorrow morning about this.
So I'm asking, um my motion was to direct our executive director during his testimony to tell the legislature. That their RPC does not want to be involved. Now, if they listen to that, that's up to them. If they put us in, that's a whole different conversation, I am in no way making a motion that we will ignore the law as written. This is, they're forming the law at the moment, and my motion was about nothing but directing Charlie to tell the legislature. That the RPC uh commission does not wish to be involved in this discussion.
Jackie, you still have a comment? No, because your hand's still up, so I didn't know. Are, so is there any other comments? Any, uh so, I guess, that, I guess we're ready to vote on the uh John's motion? And given, I think probably we'll have to do it uh with the little hand thingies, if I can figure out how to use it myself.
Or you can just raise your hand on on the video screen.
That's true, you know, because that, it it it's not going to be a all-in-one vote, I think there'll be a variety of votes. So if people are in favor of John's motion to tell the legislature. Not to get us involved, uh then vote yes, if you disagree, vote no. Is that, that, does that clear, is that clear, John?
Yeah, clear to me.
All right, uh so everybody uh who's in favor of the motion, raise your hands. Okay, all those who are voting no, raise your, oh wait, there's one more question. I see Amy's, oh Amy's hand up, okay, she's got to vote no, correct? You haven't.
No, you you need to allow an option for abstaining as well.
That's true, I was going to do that last.
Okay, just make a jerk.
Be careful when you raise your hand, Amy. But um.
Wouldn't make sure you had.
I only caught two, I only caught two yes votes, was that, was that all there was?
That's what I saw. So the next was going to be uh all those uh again, voting no, raise your hands. Yeah, okay, I'll do that myself, okay. And those, after Charlie gets the votes. We'll do the abstentions. Did you get all of them?
So I got um, as no votes, I got uh Chris, Jackie, Garrett, Andy from Williston. And Kurt from Underhill, any other no votes? Oh, and Milton.
And mine.
Oh, and and Charlotte, okay, thank you.
And Jackie?
I got her.
Okay, and Garrett, you got Garrett?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, and then abstentions?
Uh that's Amy and Andy Montrow.
Yes. Well, thank you for everybody's comments, I think that this was a very good discussion. Um it is, you know, it's, it's not an easy task.
And just uh, but uh thank you, John, for uh, you know, uh pushing the conversation. So I I can convey, you know, there's not unanimous support for engagement and frankly, we didn't have a vote. Saying we definitely want to engage, right? Uh we just had a, a motion did not pass to not engage, sorry, to use a double negative, right? So, all right, I will try to finesse that in my conversation tomorrow, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, if we're ready to, oh, Chris, you have a comment?
I think we were going on, I was reading you, uh leading you by going to number twelve. And I was going to suggest we could have governance of the Burlington Airport on a future attended topic.
Let me first give the 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 very brief that your committee and liaison activities and reports are either in your packet. Or your link, depending on your choice. And now, now you're good, number twelve.
Sorry, jumped the gun, as I said.
But that's, that that's, that's probably worthwhile, just a very worthwhile discussion based on what we just had.
I I think what's important to uh South Burlington is that we see wider representation. Uh and I disagree with the turf war characterization of the thing, I think. You know, just to follow up, that Williston, you barely hear about and seem to be um as effective as South Burlington in ways. And I work in Williston right underneath the whole thing, so as a regional economic driver, nobody can compete with the the airport, it's wonderful. So uh I think we want to see the value of the airport, but you also want to see that uh the region is invested in it more than. You know, perhaps it is at the moment, and it it goes to what is Burlington going to be like politically? Uh and how does that then uh reflect on the county and the state? So, there you go.
Thank you, Chris. Uh anybody have, anyone else have any other topics they'd like to have discussed in the future?
I'll just bring up that the Equity Leadership Committee meeting, I don't know if it was Jackie or or Lane. Um we talked about having something about the equity uh every, every meeting, just to keep it on the plate.
Okay, Dan?
Just furthering the discussion on the airport, if you just, I find it interesting that uh in regards to Chris. Speaking about the other communities weighing in on the governance or the um management of the airport, rather than just Burlington. Um or South Burlington, but the community's whole, as an MPO, we don't have all the communities in our county voting on MPO business. It's just MPO um communities, so using the same logic, everybody in in our county should be voting on MPO projects. If 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 I read it right or understand it right.
Thank you. All right, uh any other? All right, uh, any other future agenda topics out there that people would like to have? I mean, you know, because equity is important, a lot of, you know, issues right now. Uh, all right, well, if there's no other items for agenda, uh are there members' items or other business? Nobody has any other things to talk about? It's really interesting.
Have we adjourned?
That's exactly, we are then, Garrett, you got it. Do we have a second?
Second.
Andy, if any six, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much for your comments.